We're all here.
All right, Stacy. I'm going to reopen the last special meeting we just had to be sure there is no public comment on that last item.
Recording in progress.
So let's reopen the last special meeting we just had and ask if there's any public comments on that second item.
There is no public comment that the city clerk's office has received via email or speaker card.
All right. Seeing no comments in the room, I am going to adjourn that meeting and I am going to call to order.
Mayor Sander, just a moment, there's somebody who's mentioned something. Did you have an item?
Yeah, I did have an item.
Okay.
And just to be clear, the item you would be speaking on would be the financing options for significant city projects item.
How about projects?
The item that was before the council was financing options for significant city projects. If you want to speak to particular council comments you heard during that item, you could, but that was the subject of the item.
That was our special meeting topic. We're about to do public comment in general and then take up our other items for our regular meeting.
I haven't done this before, but I basically wanted to... My name's Cheryl.
So this is being televised, you need to come up to the microphones? Yeah. And keep in mind that we asked for public comment before we adjourned. We didn't? Oh, we forgot, okay.
That's why I... Thank you, lady. Okay, so I haven't done this before, but something's kind of struck me that Donald was talking about. And he was talking about how we do...
Can you share with us your name and then I can start the clock?
My name's Cheryl.
Cheryl, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Okay. And he talked about, you know, what the city's made of, and we do have a lot of blue collar, and we have a lot of retired people here. And then you talked about upscale. So I'm just wondering, you know...
That's not the item that we're talking about. That was the item...
You talked about building.
That was the item before, about the economic plan.
Okay, but we weren't asked about comments at that time.
We did, didn't we? Okay.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, but I did not hear you ask that. Am I allowed to continue?
Please continue.
Okay, thank you, Dick. So I'm just wondering, you know, are we going to push those of us who have been here 55 years to the back and just move forward? Are we going to try to find a way to unify us? Because one of the things we really are lacking, Linda, is that people have fun here, but we don't really have a lot of entertainment for the evening or for our children. So I'd just like for the city to, you know, remember, there's some of us old folks still here, and we are on fixed incomes, so we can't keep going forward on the upscale of things when it comes to entertainment and such. I mean, I remember the Jerry Lewis movie theater. When's the last time anybody in this town watched a movie in this town? We have to go outside of our town for entertainment. So anyway, that's what I wanted to talk about. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Were there any others? Seeing none, I'm going to adjourn.
I believe that there's somebody else who just... Did you have something else to say? No, okay.
Seeing none, I'm going to adjourn the special meeting. And I am going to begin our regular meeting with a call to order. And roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Here.
Councilmember Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Terry.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pula Patti is absent. Mayor Sander.
Here. All right, Madam Clerk, if you could do the meeting recording, meeting video recording and playback schedule announcement, please.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will replay on Thursday, September 5th at 7:00 PM and Sunday, September 8th at 1:00 PM on Channel 14. The meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
All right, very good. We are now going to proceed to the pledge of allegiance and an invocation. I'm going to ask my colleague, let's see, who's sitting there on my imaginary left? Donald, I'm going to ask you to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And we have Ruby Smallwood from the Law Enforcement Chaplaincy who's going to give an invocation. So if you'd remain standing after the pledge, we'll move right into that invocation.
Okay. Everybody ready? Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Gracious Father, may this day of work have the blessing of your touch. Anoint the plans that even the smallest of tasks that are before you brings you honor. May all the work and service we do and the way we do it bless you and those we serve. Bless this council and the community they serve with wisdom, discernment, commitment, courage, and strength. Continue to cover them with your peace, love, and guidance. May all things be rooted in your unbiased love and attention. May your influence be in our lives, this council, and our beloved community. Amen.
All right, Ruby, thank you so much for that invocation. Thank you, Donald, for leading us in the pledge. As is probably obvious to everybody in the room, I am not in the room. I'm actually in Salt Lake City where I'm going to give an address to the Utah Municipal League tomorrow. It's part of my duties as being the president of the National League of Cities. So it's a somewhat awkward situation with me being absent running a meeting, but luckily we have technology on our side and we have a bunch of good people in the room to make a, to make a good, productive, and smooth-running meeting. With that in mind, I am going to suggest an alteration to our schedule. Normally, we run through our agenda from low-numbered items to high, but I can't quite see it from where I am, but I'm told there are a number of people in the room here for a public hearing item, which is item number 15.1 under public hearing. So I'm going to suggest, colleagues, that we move, that we take public comment next, item number 10, and then we skip all the way to item 15.1 to do that particular hearing, given the large number of people in the room for it. Normally, we wouldn't necessarily take something out of order, but we're already running late due to the overage on our previous meeting. Is there any objection to that change in order?
Do we need a motion to do that, Adam?
Yes, you do.
Then I will move that we rearrange our, the order of our agenda tonight.
Second.
As stated.
All right, motion made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pula Patti is absent. Mayor Sander.
Aye. So that's unanimous vote. Okay, we will take public comment at this time. Members of the public wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called up by me at the point in the agenda when that item is going to be heard. So speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less, to state their name and their community of residence. Under provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is privy to from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. So this public comment period is for comments on all things not on our agenda. If you hear from an agenda item, you will have a chance to comment when that item comes up. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone who wants to make general public comment?
Yes, we'll start with Helen Willen-Bishaw. After Helen will be James Garcia, James Oliver, Walter Lomax. You'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Hi, I'm Helen Willen-Bishaw, and I live over near the Riverbend Park. What I'd like to talk about is a lot of mailings come out from the city. The ballots that come out, nowhere, nowhere on the mailing does it say it's a ballot. There's many people that just see from the city and they can it. When I get ballots in for my investments or my insurance companies or my banking, they all say ballots on it. I believe if the city put the word ballot on envelopes or anything that was important that requires a percentage of the citizens to respond to in order to get, to pass something or not pass it, it should be of hyper-importance. And hyper-importance would be, including the word ballot on it, whether it be in red or I don't really care what color, as long as it's bright and it stands out. Red is a traditional color, but anybody that's colorblind doesn't really see red, so go figure that one out. That's all I've got to say right now. Thank you.
Next speaker is James Garcia.
Hello, James Garcia, a resident of Stone Creek. I'm here tonight just because on Sunday night and to Monday morning on Labor Day, there was a nice little accident that happened and a person left the scene. That was on Baroque and Terra Blanca Way. Had to call the cops on him for it. And I know we have in the works, public works, a speed comming on that particular area. So I just want to know if we're at a point finally to have that project worked on. Person, you can see, clearly see the skid marks, nice little screech, and then a nice crunch. They hit the pole, light pole, with the street signs on it and decided to walk away and try to ensure me don't need a call, because I actually went outside at midnight to go check on him. Because when you hear something like that right around the corner, you want to go ahead and make sure people are okay and safe. Tried to ask if they were okay, we're okay, but you hear the screaming of the woman, and she runs back to another house a couple doors down. So just want to know safety concerns. Are we going to do something on that yet? Because I know it's been on the works for Baroque, kind of like traffic calming, so really appreciate it. Thank you.
Next speaker is James Oliver. Following James will be Walter Lomax. You'll have up to three minutes, in case you want to divide it, three and three.
Great. Hi, good evening. My name is James Oliver. This is my friend here, Walter Lomax. We're both members at Grace Missionary Baptist Church here in Sacramento. And we come to you, we're not, I guess we're not protesting anything, but we're just, I guess we're introducing ourselves as far as a community, trying to uplift the community. And we have some, some land that we want to develop into some kind of resource center for children or some kind of rec center for the elderly or what have you. But I'll let Mr. Lomax kind of explain that a little bit.
Okay, just to repeat it, good afternoon, by the way. My name is Walter. Just to repeat it and go over that really quick, we're at 9877 Old Placerville Road and it's Grace Missionary Baptist Church, and it sits on approximately five acres of land. So what we've done through the church is developed a nonprofit organization to try to help develop that property and create a lot of community-related programs in the community. So what we want to do is build or trying to do, build a resource center that's going to accommodate a lot of these activities for the community. And we are hoping to put that out there to the panel and the rest of the community out there in an effort to let you know what we're trying to do. One hand, everybody works together, so don't be surprised if you see us down the road soliciting input, cooperation, knocking on your doors, trying to ask you what is it we can do to help, what you could do to help us. That's who we are and that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to help continue to build a better community here in Rancho, okay? And I had a little something I was going to pass out to you, and forgive me if I didn't give it to you first, but following proper protocol, is it okay to approach the panel and pass this out or do you give it to the clerk? Okay, I'll share it with the clerk. If you would, to share it over to everybody on the panel. And it has a website address on there.
Sir, just to make sure, we're on TV, so make sure you're by the microphone so that we can capture you.
There's a handwritten website address on there. Please just go ahead and log into the website and go ahead and scan it and review it. And thank you for giving us this opportunity to share that with you. And hopefully down the road, we can create a better partnership and working relationship and see if we can just continue to build Rancho.
All right, thank you very much.
All right.
The city clerk's office, that's all the speaker cards that I have for general public comment. The city clerk's office also received one public comment via email. That was from Lisa Cooley. It has been placed on the city's website, distributed to the city council, and printed in a binder in the back of the council chambers.
All right, that is the end of public comments. Normally, we would go through a number of other reports here, including council reports, but we have voted to move ahead to public hearing items, and we are going to take up item 15.1. So Madam Clerk, if you could announce that subject, please.
The subject is public hearing and resolution approving maximum rate adjustments for residential solid waste collection and street sweeping services for the period from January 1st, 2025 through July 1st, 2029.
Okay, so we will have a staff report, then we will open the public hearing, we will take public comments, we'll have council discussion, close the public hearing, and that's how this item will run. So at this point, Steve Harriman, I think you are up for the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Sander, members of the council. I'm Senator Mike...
Thank you. It's my first time. Thank you, Mayor...
Welcome, young man.
Mayor Sander, members of the council, Steve Harriman with the Public Works Department. I have a bit of a cough tonight. I apologize. I'm going to do my best to get through this. So we're here tonight to talk about the Prop 218 process for residential solid waste and street sweeping rates. So just by way of an introduction, the current contract with the public services for residential trash collection and street sweeping expires at the end of this calendar year. On January 17th of 2023, the city council directed staff to proceed with a competitive procurement process for a new contract. On January 28th, excuse me, 2023, we released an RFP. We got four proposals on September 15th of 2023. And on March 3rd of 2024, the city council approved the selection of Atlas Disposal for the new contract. And so the term of that new contract begins on January 1st of 2025 and goes through the end of December of 2034. And just by way of a quick summary, this, these are the terms of the new contract. It's very similar to the current contract with the public services. It is a 10-year agreement. There's weekly garbage and mixed organics collection, including food waste. There's three cans of garbage, three sizes of garbage cans available, and there's a bundled rate. So the rate that a customer pays for the entire solid waste program is dependent on the size of the trash can that the resident chooses. We have every other week co-mingled recycling collection. We have curbside collection of oil filters, sharps, and household batteries and holiday trees. We will continue with our bulky item collection program. Every resident may make three appointments per year at 10 yards each, and that material is processed at a recycling facility to recover recyclable and reusable materials. Through the contract, we have garbage recycling and organics collection at city facilities, and that is provided at no cost to the city. We have garbage recycling and porta potty services at up to 10 city events per year, so things like the Fourth of July and IFest, those services are provided through this contract. The contractor provides billing, customer service, and public education. Street sweeping, and there are 14 sweeps per year on residential streets. We have a 45% to 53% minimum diversion rate, and diversion is sort of another word for recycling, but the new Atlas Disposal has agreed to meet this higher level of diversion over the course of the contract. We have 2,000 cubic yards per year of illegal dumping collection included in the contract, which is provided at no cost to the city. And finally, new compressed natural gas vehicles. The contract requires them by July 1 of '26, but Atlas has actually already taken delivery of new vehicles, so we will have new vehicles on day one. The request for proposals documented that the city issued instructed proposers to provide proposed rates for trash collection and street sweeping starting January 1 of 2025. So each of the four proposals that we received had a rate scenario starting January 1 of '25. The new contract also allows subsequent adjustments on July 1 annually, and we have been doing rate adjustments since 2005, I believe, on July 1 annually, and that will continue. The annual adjustments cover cost increases in items like labor, fuel, waste disposal, processing, insurance, vehicle maintenance, and replacement. And in the new contract, the annual adjustments are capped at 5%, and they're, they're calculated based on changes to the Consumer Price Index. So the process that we are implementing tonight is, is, is through Prop 218, which was approved by California voters in 1996. And Prop 218, among other things, allows property owners and tenants to protest proposed rate adjustments for certain municipal services, including trash collection and street sweeping. The proposed rate package may not go forward, it may not be implemented, if the majority of the affected property owners or tenants submits a valid written protest. So as required by state law, on July 15th, 2024, we mailed a notice to all residential solid waste customers. We sent it both to the billing address and the service address with the proposed five-year rate plan and instructions on submitting a valid protest. And that notice also provided the date and time for tonight's public hearing. So we had previously implemented a Prop 218 process for trash and street sweeping rates from July 1 of 2022 through December 31st of 2024. So that previous process for which we implemented the Prop 218 process expires basically at the end of this calendar year. So we're therefore required to implement a new Prop 218 process for the proposed rate starting on January 1. And, and this process is, the, the rate notice that we sent covers a five-year horizon. So it covers rates from January 1 of '25 through June 30 of 2030. So remember, that's five years. We have a 10-year contract, so, so we will be, have to do another Prop 218 process in five years for the remaining five years on the contract. So there are currently 21,358 residential solid waste customers in Rancho Cordova. So if we do the arithmetic, the proposed rates may not proceed if 10,680 valid protests are received through this process, which is basically 50% plus one of the affected parcels. And written protests may be submitted up to the close of tonight's public hearing, and I believe that the city clerk has some written protest forms if anybody in the chamber would like to submit a written protest who has not done so already. So this was basically the, the rate sheet that was included in the, in the notice, and there's a lot of information on this, so let me, let me try to explain it. Can everybody see my green dot there? So everything above this first red line is basically standard rates. And so it's the 32-gallon trash, 64-gallon trash, 96-gallon trash. And again, the rate that a customer pays is dependent upon the size of the trash can that they select. So these were in, in the proposal provided by the contractor, the rates for January 1 of 2025. So the four proposals that the city received through the RFP process all put down exactly this rate schedule starting January 1 of 2025. Moving to the right, we're seeing July 1 of '25, '26, '27, '28, '29, and those are showing the maximum 5% increase per year. So this establishes the ceiling. In all likelihood, the actual rates that will be implemented over this horizon will be less. It's very unlikely that throughout the course of this, of this time horizon, we're going to see rates, CPI at 5% or above. So this establishes the ceiling. As we go down on this, and now my thing isn't working. What's that? Do you have a better one? The, the first line there is additional large items, so this is for the bulky item program. Ooh, that one's nice. Maybe it's not. Anyway, I'll just, we can get through this. The, the additional large items, this is when people put out more than 10 cubic yards for the bulky item program, and there's a fee per yard if they exceed the 10 cubic yards. The next six lines or so are late set out of trash, recycling, and green waste. This is when people forget that it's their trash day, and they call the trash company and say, oh, man, I forgot to put my cart out. Can you come back? If you call before 2:00 PM, it's a late set out on the same day. If you call after 2:00 PM, 2:00 PM, it's a late set out for the next day. So the, the contractor is allowed to recover that expense. The next one are for extra trash cans. That's just if you want an extra 32, 64, or 96-gallon trash. Those are the fees. The next two lines there are extra green waste cart per month and extra recycle cart per month. And in the current contract and the new contract, every resident may receive one additional green waste cart or recycle cart at no charge, and that will continue in the new contract. So, so in effect, everybody gets four cans at the base rate. So if you want another recycle can on top of that, or another organics can on top of that, that's where this rate stays. But that, that one extra free can is going to, to remain. The, the next is the cart exchanges, extra cart exchange, and actually, that shouldn't say per month, it's a cart exchange. Every resident is allowed to exchange the size of their carts one time per calendar year. If you go two times or more, there is a charge for that. So sometimes people call and they say, we're having a party, I want to get a bigger garbage can. That first exchange, there's no cost for the exchange, but if you want a second exchange per calendar year, then there is a charge for that. The next two lines are contamination, and this is when people just fill their cans with, their recycling green waste cans with household garbage. And residents are given the option to either clean out the can themselves or the company can come back and service those cans, but there's a, a charge to it. And then finally, cart replacement, 32, 64, 96-gallon cart replacement with delivery. And there's been a lot of questions about this one. If the garbage company, through the course of their service, damages your cart, there is no charge. They will either repair or replace that cart at no charge. And if the cart is lost or stolen, the contract says everybody gets a new set of carts at no charge per the contract term, so over the next 10 years. But we have situations where, for example, people move out of a house and they, they load their cans up into the U-Haul and drive away, and then the cans are gone. We've had other situations where neighbors steal cans from one another, so, so the contract says, once over the contract term, we will replace your cans at no cost. But if, if it exceeds that, and they're expensive, right? The cans are expensive, then there is a fee for that. This was the written protest form that was included in the Prop 218 notice, and, and I will say that I think we are somewhat unique in our approach to this. Other jurisdictions, including where I live, you get a letter from the jurisdiction saying, you know, this is a protest process. If, if you want to process, you may write us a letter, which is very cumbersome, right? So we have a, we have a process here by which we have actually pre-written a protest form letter. People put their name, address, or APN, they initial that they're protesting, and they do a signature and a date.
And, and Steve, if I may, just commenting on one public comment, the, the letter that is sent and postmarked does say solid waste rate protest prominently on the, on the letter itself.
Yes. We can thank our communications team for, for putting that in. But yes, so the, the outside of the letter was very clear as to what the contents of... But yes, the outside of the letter was very clear as to what the contents of the letter were.
I would just add, to specifically identify it as a ballot would actually create, be a statement that would be legally imprecise and arguably misleading. So you can only use words like the words that were selected by the city.
Correct. Okay, and I covered this before, but let me just cover it one more time. So the new contract starts January 1 of 2025, January 1, 2025. And it caps annual rate increases of 5%. So the table that was received in the notice shows the maximum. That is setting the ceiling. And there's a strong likelihood that the actual rates going forward will be lower, but we have established the ceiling. And if for some reason CPI exceeds 5% in any year, the excess amount then would roll over to the following year. And that amount would be calculated in the subsequent year rate adjustment. So in no year would the actual rate adjustment exceed 5%. So the next steps were, I think, then the mayor would open the public hearing. We'll take public comments. There will be a last call for submission of written protests. The public hearing will be closed. And then the city clerk will announce the tabulation of the written protests that have been received. Again, if less than 10,680 valid protests are received, staff recommends that the council approve the resolution that's in your packet, approving the maximum adjustments for the period from January 1, 25 through June 30 of 29. If more than 10,680 are received, the rate package may not proceed. And we will work on an alternate plan to go forward. And we would come back to council with an alternate plan. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take questions.
Through the marathon, I may make one quick comment at a council member's request about conflicts. Council member Terry did not participate in some of the prior conversations regarding the solid waste franchise at that point in the process because his wife's business had received contributions from one of the competitors.
Her nonprofit.
Her nonprofit, exactly. And, but at this point, we're at a stage in the process where the contract has been approved by the council. The rates have been approved. The extensive details about all of the terms of service that they will be providing, we're really just at a stage where the community is being asked not to protest on the Prop 218 proceedings. And if there were to be a protest, the contract would essentially still go forward, and the council would be brought back alternative ways of paying for what you don't agree with. So there really isn't a financial implication at this point, in our opinion, on the business from the decision that's currently before you. So we don't think, Mr. Terry asked me to explain that. And it's a relatively technical issue that does require a few sentences of explanation.
All right, very good. Is there any other staff comments? I'm not in the room. Micah, anybody else need to say anything?
Sure, I'll just mention a few things and kind of reiterate some of the things that Steve mentioned and appreciate the conversation coming forward. And I know there's lots of community questions about this item. And really just emphasizing that, you know, part of this process did include a really extensive project and program to go out to bid and find vendors for this service. And really, this is about kind of a service that's being provided to the community through these companies. And so we did go through a pretty extensive and lots of public hearings and lots of public meetings about selecting the right vendor for this service. At the end of the day, the final two who were being considered were both the lowest-cost providers. So they did compete, you know, on the affordability scale. This is an RFP process, so there's lots of reasons why you can move forward with the right vendor. But the last two that were considered were the most affordable of the proposals that we saw. And this process did not change the amount that was put into the original contract that was presented by the winning company, which is Atlas. This is consistent with basically the amount that was submitted as part of the contract process. So this isn't a different change than what was submitted as part of this process. This is basically a continuation of that recommendation and that selection as the provider for this service. And so we appreciate that and appreciate the opportunity here today.
All right, very good. Council, would you like to make comments now or hear public comment?
I'd say let's take public comment.
Any other voices on that? All right, Madam Clerk, why don't we go with public comment at this point? If you'd like to make a comment on this, and you haven't turned in a card yet, please do. You can just fill one out and take it up to the clerk. Stacy's sitting up there on your left. And Stacy, whenever you're ready, we can start public comment.
We're going to pretend you have a gavel. We're opening the public comment.
Oh, we're opening the public hearing, sorry.
Sorry, the public hearing, yes.
I can clap or something. It's not a gavel.
So we're going to start with Cheryl Putman. Following Cheryl will be Wendy Castleman. Following Wendy will be James Garcia, Helen Whalen-Bishaw, and Jeffrey Black. Cheryl, if you come forward, you'll have up to three minutes.
A quick comment for new speakers. If you stand in the middle, it picks you up perfectly.
Oh, okay. Yeah, this is not my cup of tea. But this is why I came tonight to talk about this subject, so thank you. And, you know, we're all concerned with rising costs. It's probably what brought many of us together tonight. You know, I'm on a fixed income of $500 a month after retiring from an insurance company after 30 years. So it's tight. But one of the things I'm hoping that's in this new contract since I just learned is already been approved by council, is the ability to put our trash on hold if we're away. I am one person living in the home. My can goes out every other week. My recycled and green waste goes out every three weeks. But I pay the same rate as anyone else with the same size can. So hopefully, that option's available. I do like to travel. I have that ability. And I don't want to pay $60 a month if my trash isn't being picked up for four weeks. So the other concern that I had was, when the trucks damage the lids, they don't always know that they've damaged the lids. I've had that happen with several cans. In fact, one of mine is still broken because they didn't pick up and exchange the can. So I'm hoping that there'll be some consideration given to that once-a-year swap. But thank you.
Next speaker is Wendy Castleman.
Good evening, council members. Well, she kind of took a little bit of my thunder. I'm Wendy Castleman. And I've had the same missing lid green waste now for, well, as long as we've been with Republic Services. I just let the rain go in, and it helps the stuff go out. So it doesn't stick at the bottom. It's kind of a win-win. Yeah, yeah. Well, especially now we're on metered water and have to pay for it. This contamination charge, I can do all my due diligence. But if the guy next door craps on my clean stuff that is in the back of the truck, he'll get the charge. I won't, right? Or is that a standard, we're all going to pay for the bad events of some?
Yeah, is it okay if I?
No, no, we don't do back and forth. So go ahead and make your full comment. And then staff can address questions that we heard during public comment.
Oh, okay. Well, pretty much that's it, because.
I'm keeping notes of the comments, and I assume staff is as well. Go ahead, Wendy.
You guys have us putting pizza boxes in the green waste and all that, and I get that. You don't want waxed stuff, although the chicken buckets are kind of waxed. They'll only stand up so long, and then, you know. So I choose to just garbage that instead. I'm doing everything that I can to be the good occupant that I can be. But like I said, when my neighbor down the street just free-for-alls and all his cans, and he's after me, I shouldn't have to recover any charge for that. So if that's a, you're going to audit, and the driver knows who's doing that, and you're going to charge them that fee, then that's fine. But I don't want to pay for people's bad behavior. I believe I do that every day with my tax money. And I don't want to see it, you know, go that. Kind of like the other woman. I have one bag of garbage a week. I don't put my can out because it gets beat to crap. Bang, 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 and then the lid. I did replace the recycle once because it was raining and getting rainwater in on all my dry paper, stuff like that. So also, this is the envelope that we got, Mr. Lindgren. It just had the city logo. There was no protest. There was no nothing. That's what came in with the letter of protest and that. We never got any letter that said protest or anything. So I'm just letting you know there that I don't know anybody that got what you showed and described. Ours just came with the Rancho City. So I know that business has to be had. And I don't mind paying my fair share, shall we say. I just really don't want to pay for other people's inefficiencies. And just keep that in mind. And like the other lady, if we can have a more tailored, once-a-month pickup charge, I'm all for that. And if we have to put in for the new items, because they've been taking people's carts for a long time, I went and etched in mine, because I've had to go reclaim it from my neighbor.
Please wrap up your comments.
So I'm just letting you know, this has been going on for a while. And I didn't mind the conversation to my neighbors. That's my cart. That's how I know, in commandeering it back. But it does happen, and homeless, it's a way to haul their stuff. So nobody wants to pay $88, no matter how many times it's happened that somebody's absconded with their cart. Thank you.
Next speaker is James Garcia.
I like it actually closer, because you can actually hear then. James Garcia, Stone Creek. I really wish, before we opened up a public comment on this, that we would actually have the vote count tally. So that way, we could have known whether our voices right here are actually going to make a difference. Because it is up to you ultimately, even if the protest hearing doesn't pass. You get to make the decision to go forward. Because again, this decision was made back on March 3 of the year, when there was the new contract awarded to Atlas. During that timeframe, many of us never even recalled hearing that there was going to be a contractual increase come July 1 and have that happen for the next five years. That was not in that discussion about the bidding. The fact that Atlas was considered the lowest bid, it wasn't. Because when the final numbers were there, Republic actually had the lower numbers. So that 5% maximum cap would be a lot less because it was off on the overall cost of things. The fact that they want to go for the maximum authorized on day one, basically, allowing in this contract, they haven't even been servicing with our existing rates at all until come January 1 of 2025, that they're going to want the maximum immediately come July 1, does not make sense to us. They have 18 months to put in the new vehicles. They're getting them in now. Great, love the fact that they are. But that was part of the deal with the state, with the regulations of service. They needed to go to cleaner vehicles. It wasn't us. They confront that. They should have calculated that into their rates. So there's no reason for them to have a 5% rate increase right now. According to any of this information, there's many of us, again, that have already spoken. They're on fixed incomes. This is going to hurt them, just like the stormwater rate increases. And I also did not receive it, say, in a protest hearing, but I did receive it. I tried to talk to my neighbors, and all of them saw it also as, oh, another junk mail from the city. So I did get a couple of extra ballots and brought a few in because they weren't able to make them in in time. But I really hope you consider that, think about it. Even if it's not a landslide victory in protest, please, don't give them 5%. Don't approve it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Helen Whalen-Bishaw.
Hello, it's Helen Whalen-Bishaw again. When they talk about a tainted can, I think some of these trash trucks actually have cameras, so they can see what's going into the bin. I'm a corner house going into Rod, going into Riverbend Park, which used to be Gaty Park. The homeless come out of the park, and they dump stuff in my green bin quite frequently. Because I'll go out throughout the day and pull the bundles of garbage that has clothing, all sorts of stuff, out of my green bin. So if you're going to penalize me for not being able to control my can because I'm on easy access for the homeless to go into the park, that's not a fair item. People know in my neighborhood because we share green bins. David Sanders is well aware of this, because I've burrowed his a few times. We put initials in all of our cans. So when one shows up missing, we go through the neighborhood to find out what happened. Because sometimes someone loses their can, whether it be it went into the trash can or recycle thing, and the driver didn't say anything. Or as someone else stated, people commandeer your cans to use it for other things other than trash pickup. So it's really difficult. Some of these cans, because of the way they bang them going in, rips the lids off anyway. And, you know, I just think that we need to revisit and look at where a person is. Because I just took a 55-gallon bag of stuff out of my green bin that was put out, because I put mine out like every week. And I thought it was kind of interesting, because it had clothing in it. It had all sorts of stuff in it. So I just throw it in my garbage can for next week's pickup. That's my major complaint, is what we're doing. But I do have the complaint that the, I don't recall the meeting saying that we're going to get an increase in January. And my concern about the increase is Atlas hasn't proven itself. So we're going to give somebody a bonus because the prior person sitting in that job was due to get a pay raise. So we give them a pay raise. And the new person comes in, automatically gets an increase in pay. That's what it seems like to the public. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jeffrey Block, or Black?
Black.
Black, sorry.
My name is Jeffrey Block. Live at Walnut Woods, Scottsdale, New Way. I've gone through a bunch, come to these meetings and listen to your, how you propose to go through these things. And then all of a sudden, it's here. And I never remembered anything being sent out. I didn't receive your protest either. And I get mail from you guys, and I actually read the stuff that comes from Rancho Cordova. Because I don't believe in a bunch of different taxes being put in or anything. But to go with your definition of what's going on with the schedule, nobody's ever explained any of that to anybody. They have to call, you call Atlas, they can't explain it to you. You call you, anybody here, and no one explains it to anybody. Why? You send out a thing, here it is, all the schedule. So are the trash cans that they get damaged by the vendor going to be charged to us? If you understand what I'm saying? I'm asking you. You seem to know everything.
Yeah, we're not going to have a back and forth. So you go ahead and make your comments, and then staff will respond to them.
Okay. Well, recently, I got a new trash can on Thursday. It's one of my trash pickups. Put all my stuff in, next week, here it comes, and they smash it. So I call them up. What did they do? They brought a trash can out on Friday. Did they charge me for it? No. But if they do charge you for it, it's $30. This $100 thing is ridiculous. And the senior citizens' fixed income, they can't afford this. And the senior citizens' fixed income, they can't afford this. That's my comment. Can you not get a?
Next speaker is Nancy Copeland.
Hi, Nancy Copeland. And I did receive the envelope that had the little blue square on it that said it was for a protest. And I just want to thank you for that, because it's what got me here tonight. I just have a couple of questions. One is the fee, if you have additional large items past the, I believe it's the ten feet. When I've put out items before for the pickup the night before, people come and dump a bunch more stuff on there. So I don't want to get charged for somebody else's stuff. I put a pretty neat pile out there. Either people come through and spread it all over the place or add to it. So that's a concern of mine. And also, street sweeping. We have a lot of people on our street who have a lot of cars. So basically, the street doesn't get very clean. We don't, there's not a set date or time. I noticed downtown, there's, you know, you can't park in a certain area on a certain day, a certain time. It would be nice to know when the street sweepers are coming, or so people could have the cars off the street. Because by the time they come down my street and go around a bunch of the cars, streets aren't clean. Anyway, thank you very much.
Next speaker is Teresa Aguilar. Teresa, did you want to speak on this item?
Hi, my name is Teresa Aguilar, and I'm from 10-805 Valentry Way. It's a rental property, but it's rented by family. I never received any notification of the increase. I receive monthly bills. I pay them up. I read everything that comes into me, because of the property. I feel like you're going outside of the limits. There's a lot of older people that I know that live on my block. There's no way they could afford this stuff. They make, one person only makes eight hundred and fifty dollars a month. Thankfully, they have their lease paid off. But we got to watch out for our people. Our younger people, our older people, they do not have the money that people are expecting you guys to pay. So you need to think about them, not just, oh, this public service, they're doing a great job. There's always some way you can find to cut down on things. Replacement places, replacement articles. My daughter's recycle bin did get busted by the person, and he even made a comment about it. But it's still sitting there four months later with the busted top. Where does she go to have it replaced? She makes the calls in, they do not listen to her, they do not respond. I make the calls, they still didn't respond. We need to make sure, before you take steps, what type of policies they are. Do they back their policies? And why is the expense way over, when you could get things cheaper? Like the one gentleman said, you paid thirty dollars for replacement, you're going to charge him a hundred dollars for it now? Has things gone up that far?
Mayor Sander and Steve Herriman, those are all the public comments that I have for this item.
My name is Lynn Nichols, and I live in Capital Village. And I was hoping not to stand here. But since I didn't hear the one piece related to this topic, that I noticed I wanted to mention it. The information that was mailed to us, and which was mentioned earlier by someone, was that annual fee adjustments may not exceed 5%. But I would point out to you that on July 1st of this year, we got a 2.98% increase, which I assumed was going to run till June 30th of 2025. But instead, on January 21st of 2025, we're getting an 8.2% increase with the new fee for Atlas's services. So if you add those together and go by the fiscal year, you're up to, what, 11.2%, something like that. If you do it by calendar year, and Atlas will get a 4.7%, 7% increase. With these numbers, which I understand will baseline be set on the actual cost of, the actual inflation rate, but we only have this to go by. And that would put it up to 13% approximately in the calendar year. So I just wanted to point that out, that these are way over 5%.
Any other public comments in the room?
There's no additional public comment that I have, but I do know that individuals have written protests in their hands that they would still like to turn in, that I believe need to be turned in before the public hearing closes. Is that correct?
Okay, let's collect those. And at the same time, Steph, I made a note of basically all the questions, and I could go through those, but you may have done so as well. Is there something you want to, you want to respond with now? Steve, or Micah, or anybody else?
Yeah, I made a list of the comments, and I could do my best to respond. Or Mayor, if you'd like to call them out, we can, we can do it that way.
I have a handful of questions, too, but however we want to do it.
Okay, why don't I go through my little list here, and I'll just sort of interrogate On behalf of the public, while we're, while we're doing the work of the city clerk. So is it possible to pause during travel? That was a very interesting suggestion.
Yeah, we do not have a mechanism in the contract to pause for travel. And there's two reasons for that. One is state law requires that trash be picked up every week. So we heard some comments, could we do it every other week, or once a month, or something like that? The other one is that when the contractor puts together their rate schedule, it's predicated on mandatory service, not a voluntary program. So if it were a voluntary program, in other words, I mean, the contractor's still paying for a driver and a truck to drive down the street. If there are less customers paying into that program, it's going to raise the price for everybody else. So in effect, it is, we do not have a voluntary trash program. We have a mandatory trash program. We have allowed, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sort of by state law.
It is by state law, definitely, yeah. No, state law does require, and as well as the municipal code, requires that every improved structure have subscribed to trash service. We have suspended service for houses. For example, we had a house that had a fire that burned, and it was unoccupied, and we allowed a suspension for that. We've allowed suspensions for military deployment for, you know, a long period of time. But I have received calls from people that say, hey, you know, I'm going to be out of town for a month. Can I get a credit, in effect, on my trash bill? And we do not have a mechanism for something like that.
I guess the danger would be someone to decide, I'm going to save money and tell everyone I'm traveling, when I'm actually not, and I'm just going to make a big pile in the backyard. Right? Someone would think of that, if that was an option, I guess. Okay, and members of the audience, you're probably going to hear a lot about, when we go through these questions, about state law. Because there are so many mandates on us, and haulers, and they all filter down to you, and they all add costs to you. I don't want that to sound like an excuse, that's just sort of the reality of this situation. So there is a question about damaged cans and lids. There's quite a few questions about that, actually. So under the current contract, if you called for a new can and you had damaged it, so you were taking responsibility, is a thirty dollar replacement cost? And now it's going to be a hundred? Is that the change?
Yeah. So again, everybody gets one set of new cans per the contract term at no charge, right?
That means in a five-year period?
No, it's a 10-year contract.
Ten-year period.
And the majority of the cans that are in service have been there since day one, have been there for 20 years. But, and I'm also, you know, disappointed to hear that people have called Republic and reported a damaged can, and it has not been acted upon. And so I, that's disappointing to me. And I'm hoping that we get a better outcome as we go forward.
And then the cans are free, though. If the driver breaks it, you guys don't have to pay for it, 100%. So it's zero, because the lady said that the guy broke her can. That means that they pay for the new can when you call it. We would not sign a contract that says if the driver broke it, you should have to pay for it. And that's ridiculous that Republic said that.
What if the driver says, I didn't do it?
Yeah, no, I mean, it's very rare that a resident would actually damage their own can. You'd have to do something quite extraordinary to your can to damage it yourself. And I've hardly ever heard of somebody damaging their own can.
If you ever have one of our contractors try to fleece us, you call him, and he'll go have words with you.
You can call me directly.
Because if they're literally fighting us on a thirty dollar to fifty dollar can, then they're a bad partner. And the reason we're trying to get good partners in here. So the answer is, no, you don't have to pay for it. If they break the damn top off, and you called them two times, you call Steve. Because that's ridiculous, too. Even though that is the best way for me to wash my can out, is to not have a top, because it's broken. But, you know, like I, and I had to make the call myself, and that's why we're trying new things with new people. So you won't have to pay for it if it gets broken and by the people that service. You can, you can. Steve will be happy to hand out the, no, no handout number? And I would just say, like, I think I've lived in three, four houses, I think, since I got elected. And almost every time when I've moved into a new home, one of them has been damaged. And I've, I've never pulled rank and called the general manager or called Steve, and I do have his cell phone. I've just called the regular number, and I've had it replaced within days. So I've, I will say, this is a complaint that in 12 years on council, I have never heard. So, and I'm not saying that it's not valid, and that it didn't happen to you, but I've had neighbors, I've had friends, I've had people just on Facebook who knew who I was and messaged me and said, how do I get a new can? And I'm like, called this number. And I've never heard of somebody not getting replaced, and having to even call a second time. He can give you his email. He can zip to you the email. If you don't see it, shoot it to me, if that starts happening. Because I want to know if my partner starts acting. The other thing that I would be curious about. Because I've. Even since we implemented the green waste with the food wastes and the other things, no one has come to, and I would imagine that I would see these more often, and maybe I didn't see it in an email, or it went to my spam, but I've never seen a complaint of somebody being charged for contaminated waste. It's, I've just, it's never happened to me, and it's never happened to anybody that lives around me.
Yeah, but it's on the fire. That's why.
No, I understand, thank you. And you had your time to comment, and now it's my time.
So, you know, especially for those of us who are, who are, who are kind of paranoid about this, you know, Republic right now, all the green stuff goes into a bin in the front. The driver can see everything that goes into there from your own can. Similarly, the recycle bin goes into a separate container on the front before it's lifted up. He can see everything that's going in there also. So if there was something that was not authorized to be in either green or recycle, then he would know it immediately and could put one of those nasty grams on your trash can, which they have done in the past. But, you know, I've sent, I've sent Steve pictures. When you look down our alleys in Cat Village, after all the trash has been picked up, and half the cans are turned over, and half the cans are going the other way around, and some of them have lost their lids, and the others were squished to death, you know, we didn't do it. It's the truck. It's the whole giant mechanism of those trucks. And the imprecise way that it, that they put the trash cans back down again, so that they're in danger of falling over.
Or just the wind knocks them over. I mean, I remember.
And I can't, I can't imagine.
Living in the Villas once, I remember seeing 25 cans in front of one house. Because they all went down the street into the corner and landed in this person's driveway, because that was the end of the street, basically.
I can't imagine, I can't imagine.
But I've never heard of Republic charging for these things. Yeah, I just, I would assume it was very rare, and after being warned many times.
David, probably go on with your questions.
Steve, how stringent is that contamination charge? Because like my colleagues, I've never heard of it. I do know there's state law on sorting.
I've heard of it, but I've never heard of.
And we can get, we can get penalized, you know, our hauler can get penalized for having impure recycling or impure green waste by under state law. So that, that's sort of trying to force, you know, us and force our residents to sort better. But have, have we had cases of this contamination before? I mean, that have gone to a fine or penalty or anything?
We've had it very rarely. And the most common experience we have is when somebody is moving out of a house, and all three cans are full of furniture and lamps and household garbage, and, you know, the lid is open. It's an extreme situation. 99.9% of the time, as the, as the truck is rolling down the street and servicing cans, there, you know, there's no way that you, we could have a system where we could implement a contamination charge just on regular collection. But we have had extreme situations where people, sometimes, you know, there's a water heater sticking out of the green waste can, you know? And we give the resident an opportunity to correct, so they are notified by the supervisor, and they say, you know, you're not allowed to put a water heater in your green waste can.
An arm thing won't pick it up.
You may, that's right, you may remove it, and you'll be fine. Or we will service it, and if we service it, we're going to charge you the contamination charge. I will say, we are required now by state law also to audit cans. So we have somebody who's out there in the field flipping lids to see what's in, in the containers. But that process does not result in a contamination charge. It results in a education piece. So it's very important in this new, you know, world that we're in, that people separate their material correctly. And so this is sort of an additional education mechanism to remind people that, you know, you need to put the right materials into the right can. But again, on the contamination charge, people are given the opportunity to correct at no charge, right? And if they choose not to do that, they say, no, just come get it, I don't want to mess with it, then the contamination charge would happen. But it's a very rare and extreme situation.
If someone really sneaks garbage into the poor people's thing, do we have a way to call Republic and be like, not Republic, Atlas, to be, so they could, they should be a way to get ahold of someone to be like, look, that wasn't me, we didn't put that in there, I didn't add a bicycle and hairnet to my green waste? Like, that's just, you know, like, they should be reasonable enough to talk to you guys, because we all know we have a homeless issue in the community and around, and especially for Helen, having to clean out the garbage of hairnets and the green waste. So let's, you know, I mean, as we're setting up this new relationship, we need, they need to be, show a lot of grace to us. Especially on those. Like, if they noticed it, they would, somebody would contact the homeowner or the resident, and say, hey, you have this problem, and they could correct it by putting it into the right cans and deal with it. But again, like, I would also say, in the timeframe that they usually have, I've seen the wrong stuff in cans from my neighbors. They just pick it up and throw it in there. And they figure it out at the sorting facility and other things. So, and again, even the inspection thing, they're going to contact the resident, say, you know, you can't have that in that can, that needs to go in this can.
If I can just weigh in on kind of our general, our general approach, you know, as a city, as a community, is not to be overly burdened on fines and assessments of penalties, but to provide education and conversations with folks. So I think some of these fees and some of these are part of the overall contract, because they need to be there for those who are bad behaviors. And I think our approach is to only, you know, kind of go after those who are bad behaviors. For the most part, most of our approach, and our approach as a city, and as the way we do business, is to have a conversation and to, and to educate and kind of figure out what that, what that might be. And so that's, that's generally our approach, and we would look no differently on the trash service as we do some of our other services.
That's exactly right, Micah. We do not, as an institution, you know, nickel and dime our residents trying to make money. We have, we have zero revenue from this. So it is purely a collaborative educational process.
And David, if I, if I could, the list of, excuse me, excuse me. We took public comment, now we're speaking. Please don't interrupt us, we didn't interrupt you. We we took public comment. Now we're speaking. Please don't interrupt us. We didn't interrupt you. The list of fees that are on there are also prescribed to us by the state. So we have to have a fee for that because the state says we have to have a fee for that, right? So a lot of these things, when you look at it and you go, well, it's costing this and why would they charge that? We have to come up with a fee in that line or we're violating state law, correct?
Correct.
But that doesn't mean we use it.
Right. The mechanism behind some of these, and I know I've heard that and it's like, but it's on the list. That doesn't mean we we charge it. Like, I've never heard of anybody being charged for most of these things. Can I ask a question about street sweeping? Because I believe you're still a resident of the city of Sacramento, so you probably can help us with this one. In the city of Sacramento, I still believe in coming up just about now, you can throw, well, actually, maybe it's any time of the year. But I know that the the claw service that they offer where you can throw your your yard waste into the street still exists, correct?
Uh November, December and January only.
Okay.
And then the other months, they have a appointment based bulky item program like we have year round.
They used to have it year round.
It used to be year round. That's right. Now it's November, December, January.
So so the don't park here on this day at this time every week. That is set up so that they can accommodate coming in and doing street sweeping and claw service on a much more regular basis than we're offering. So this idea that, because we're doing it, what did you say, fourteen times a year in total? It'll get to all of the streets?
Correct.
Yeah. So on the on the flip side, we offer green waste every week. You can also put out how many extra bags of?
Uh four bags.
Four more bags.
Four additional bags of
That would be picked up.
If they don't fit into your
That would be picked up by the green waste. And the city of Sacramento says at least three times out of uh or three months out of the year, you just throw all of your lawn clippings and tree clim- clippings and stuff like that. And they will pick that up and do claw and then they do street sweeping on top of that.
Uh, correct. That's correct. And and just just to uh add on to one of the comments we got about the street sweeping, there is a street sweeping schedule on the city website that uh lists and it, you know, shows the days that the sweeper uh is going to be there. Doesn't mean people necessarily are going to move their cars.
That her neighbors are all going to move their cars on that day.
But it is on there, right.
Yeah, but I did just want to juxtapose kind of the policy differences of two different cities and how they they choose to manage it. The bulky pickups in the city of Sac, I think, were far less of those because they had they had street sweeping, or not street sweeping. They had claw service for yard waste all year long. I remember moving to the city of Sac right out of college and I could not believe that people just mowed their lawns and threw it in the street. But and that was any time of the year. So th- there are differences of policies in how those things play out. Thank you.
So there's a there was a comment from Helen that trucks have cameras. I think that's now a mandate, if I'm not mistaken, from the state. Uh and there's concern about what that means going forward. Like, could each of us be graded based on what the camera detects coming from our house? But as of now, there is no such state mandate yet. Is that an accurate statement?
That that is true. It is currently not a state mandate. There's been actually several different cameras on the truck. One of them takes a picture of the front of your house. And so people call off sometimes and say, you missed my can. And then they go back and look at the picture and they say, well, we have a picture when we were there and there wasn't actually a can in front of your house. Uh so it re- actually records the cans on the street. The other one is that there's a can in the hopper, um which uh is also part of a of a safety mechanism as well. Sometimes there's uh burning embers in a can. Sometimes there's hazardous waste in a can.
Weapons.
Uh weapons. There's there's uh all kinds of things that could end up in there. Um if it is what did you?
Where? What are? Where? What street are you on again?
All right.
It's a body dump.
If it is heavily contaminated, it then would trigger uh an education at this point.
Okay. There was a comment that the other provider, other than the one we chose, would have been much cheaper.
Yeah, so you will recall that we
Actually, wait, wait, can I ask this attorney? Can I be a part of a conversation about comparing the two bids?
Yeah, I mean, it's it's done. It's the conversation is over legally. So it's it's just a comment about.
Best check and thank you.
Thank you, Freddie Donald.
I don't want to have been told I should have recused myself later and we have to do this again. So I just want to make sure. Thank you.
And Mayor, would you like me to respond to that?
Sure. Yeah, go ahead.
So you will recall that we got our in our initial first round of proposals. And then we did a best and final round with the with the two finalists, with Republic and Atlas. And astonishingly, when we did the best and final, the rates that came back from the two finalists were almost identical. I mean, they were just uh incredibly close. So for example, um Atlas was a little bit uh cheaper uh on a thirty-two gallon can. Uh Republic was, I think, six cents cheaper on a sixty-four gallon can. Uh the net difference of of that, when you add it up over the ten year contract, they were both basically at a hundred and four million dollars of total revenue over the ten year contract. Uh and they were separated, I don't remember exactly, but they were separated by something like two hundred thousand dollars over a hundred and four million in revenue. So it wa- it was and and it's a little bit difficult because, you know, you look at a rate sheet like that and, you know, one contractor is a little bit higher here, one contractor is a little bit lower there. Uh so for all intents and purposes, when we did the best and final, it it was a tie. The other two that we received initially were much, much higher, right? I mean, they were extremely high in their uh proposed rates.
What you'd say is we got a very, very, very competitive bid between the two.
There was the the suggestion that the uh the contractors are getting the maximum increase.
Yeah. Excuse me.
Sure.
Yeah, I I don't quite understand that comment. So again, when we put out the RFP, we asked for January first of twenty-five rates. So all four proposals included the January first of twenty twenty-five rates. And then through the Prop two eighteen process, we're establishing the ceiling, which shows a, you know, a maximum annual rate increase of five percent. And uh I don't know in the last twenty years if we've actually ever had a single year where CPI was at five percent. It's typically in the two to three percent range. Uh inflation is somewhat higher right now, so maybe it'll inch up a little bit. But um but but again, I mean, this is what we asked for through the proposal process, to put down the rates uh for one one twenty-five. All four of them did that. Um and then and then we do rate adjustments on January first of twenty-five, uh well, the first one. We have done annual rate adjustments on January first since two thousand and five. So that's a longstanding um mechanism. We had some discussion about not putting the first annual rate increase until July one of twenty-six, which we could have done that through the through the proposal process. Um it means that we would have started out with higher rates, right? I mean, the July, the January first twenty-five rates uh would have been higher had we had we done that mechanism. So
So can I can I say a follow up to that? So and again, I wasn't here for the full vote. I I tried to pay attention to it. But Atlas is taking over this contract on what date?
Uh January first of twenty-five.
Okay, so when so when this goes into effect?
Correct.
So in like four months?
Correct. Or or a little less even.
They'll have their trucks and everything.
Yes, drivers.
Okay. Um so somebody had mentioned that they saw a rate increase, a rate increase notice in June? Is that is that accurate?
So we did a um a contract amendment with Republic in twenty twenty-two. And it was for the remainder of that contract term, which goes through the end of this calendar year, so the end of twenty twenty-four. So when we put in the organics program and organics were
Okay, the adjustments of the program. That wasn't just to the general, was it to the general rate?
So so there was a there was a there was a rate adjustment. There was a rate adjustment for uh July one of twenty-two, which was for the organics program. And then in that contract amendment, we established a fixed three percent rate increase on July one of twenty-three and on July one of twenty-four.
For the organic, for the implementation of the organic program.
Well, it was it was just the the remainder of that contract term as we had negotiated that contract. So we had
But the but there was a service change and argumentation that we had to do based on state law to add the organics program to that. So that wasn't part of the general fee increase plans that we normally do.
Correct.
It was something that on top of the contract, we were mandated to implement the organics program. Okay, I just want to make sure that we're talking about the same thing. Yeah, so so that is not that is different than the other part. So I get I appreciate your answer. I just want to make sure that we're we're saying it correctly. What was the other question I had? All right, go ahead, David, if you have another one. I I just lost my train of thought.
So that was, Steve, that was a state mandate, though, with the organics. So you had to go in mid-contract to make a change?
Correct. And it also, you will recall, required that we go went to weekly collection for the organics. So that was a big operational change.
So forced an increase of service.
Yeah, it was actually an increase in service because now you had green waste every week instead of green waste every other week. That was actually a a for my household, that was a big benefit. Uh let's see, there was a suggestion that there's also a stormwater increase coming. I don't think there actually is a stormwater increase coming, but that's not your responsibility, Steve. Oh, getting charged for others' junk when they dump on your pile. Now that that's a very common problem, right?
Yeah.
I mean, not only that, but people come along to the pile and like sort through and leave stuff and take stuff and make a mess when they do it. So how do we deal with that?
Yeah, so that that is a common occurrence. And in this contract, we have sort of a bank of service. It's called debris collection service. And we get two thousand cubic yards per year of service that's built into the rate. And so the majority of that is used for illegal dumping, which is which there is fairly common and and we use that. But we also use it when somebody calls and says, hey, I put a nice little pile out and somebody came out and added a whole bunch of stuff and I don't want to have to pay for that. And and our response is fine. We will use the city's bank of two thousand yards of debris collection service. Uh and we will collect it.
Tell everybody the secret now.
Well, I I suppose we did, yeah. But but uh, you know
None of you heard that?
The 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 our our main objective is in situations like that is to get it cleaned up ASAP. And we have this bank of service that was built into the contract. It was negotiated in the contract and it's exactly what we use it for, is to keep our city clean.
And I can say personally, that has happened to me. I've never had a knock on the door. They still picked it all up. But I had lots of stuff added to my pile once that clearly made it noncompliant. I didn't get a phone call. I didn't get a notice. I didn't get a sticker. I didn't get anything. The thing was just gone. And even when I moved into my house, exactly to your point, the people that moved out using up one of my bulky pickups, did the size of two full-size cars worth of debris on the side of my house when they left. And it was gone. And they didn't, I don't know, they didn't call me and ask for for any kind of uh additional thing. But the the pile that they put out there, doing this job for as long as I did, was absolutely not compliant. And Republic still still did it. So for the most part, that that's all of the stories I've ever heard.
The flip side of that is when I've put out a couple of things and they weren't there the next morning. So
Oh, that happens way more often than than what I
So I actually called Republic and said, please don't send the giant truck because there's nothing to pick up.
Yeah, I put furniture out and couches disappeared.
Now, Dave, sir, one time, and you could see it, they left a chunk of motor. And I just happened to be out there when they came up.
Do back and forth with the public. So you've had your opportunity to to share. No, I can't because then we'll have everybody doing that.
Okay, there were there were comments about uh percentage increases, which I thought were interesting. A three percent increase and an eight point two percent increase in January, then another four point seven next year. Were those numbers accurate, Steve, as you as you heard them?
So I I I I wasn't actually quite following the percentages, but but the the speaker was correct because we had a rate increase on um
July first of twenty-four.
On, well, on on July, I'm sorry, yeah, correct, on July first of twenty-four. And then through the the process, right? We have a new rate package for January first of twenty-five. And then going forward, we have uh e- every July one. Although, you know, all of the of the companies that bid on this contract had the exact same information. So they knew what the July one twenty-four rate was going to be when they put together their rate package. Uh and they knew that there would be a five percent, you know, max going forward. So uh so so the way that the schedule worked out uh and the and the competitive procurement process, we have, you know, two rate increases in a short period of time, which is not normal, right? That is not our normal way to do it. Going forward, of course, we will be back on uh uh the July one twenty-five. So the speaker was correct that we're out of sequence on
And I think just to be clear about the five percent, I mean, the the January one twenty twenty-five rate wasn't built on a percentage increase. That was built on the contract costs for delivering service on that date.
Yeah, I I have a question, too, about um about the max five percent. Because I I you said some, and thi- this is what I forgot to, or I forgot that I I wanted to ask. You talked about how thi- this is this is um tagged to the to the CPI, so the Consumer Price Index, correct? And you said, we've never charged five percent, even though that's been the cap each year, correct?
In in my recollection, I don't recall uh a a calculation that resulted in a five percent adjustment.
So 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 wait, wait, so so let's hone in on that. Because as somebody who works in the finance industry and does some other things, I pay attention to CPI. And a lot of us have been paying attention to inflation, especially because a lot of the people that are running for president in other offices these days talk a lot about inflation. Inflation has been the highest it's ever been in the last fifty years, in the last few years. So in the last few years, you're telling me CPI has never been high enough to raise the rates, say, in the last five years by five percent?
No, not not in our contract.
Okay, well, no, no, no. So so that's why I that's why I want to be really clear.
Yes.
The Fed, the Federal Reserve is likely to lower interest rates this month because inflation is now likely to be under three percent, moving towards the target rate of two percent. We've in the last three years, we've had the highest CPI and the highest inflation we've seen in the last fifty years. Then you're telling me in the last two or three years, we haven't, the CPI has been high enough to raise the the contract rate by five percent, to hit that max? Would that be an accurate statement?
So let let me be very clear.
Okay.
Uh in the current contract, on July one of twenty-three and July one of twenty-four, we actually did not use the CPI. We it was a fixed three percent adjustment that was negotiated when we negotiated
The new organics program.
And so it's a great, it's a great point, uh Councilwoman Terry. The last two years, then it may have
It may have been higher, but we never
It may have been approached, but 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 we didn't use that mechanism because we had a fixed three percent adjustment.
Probably lucky for us because that might have been the only years in the last twenty-five or thirty or forty years that CPI might have hit that high.
Which which is why maybe there's a little bit higher rates starting on January one because we catching up to some of those CPI.
But I but I think what's important is when we hear things like a max of five percent tied to CPI, the last time that we would have gotten that close, and I know Garrett and I had this the same conversation when we talked about um the rent right, for lack of a better word, I don't think we call that, I think we call it rent stabilization for mobile homes. Was we were ta- we were trying to figure out like kind of what would what would have been the max? And we were using really high inflation numbers at that time because they were high at that time. And they've been high lately. But it was the first time in decades that we saw inflation look anywhere closer, not since the seventies, did we see anything close to what we've been seeing. And we still, we didn't get it those years. And to think that that's going to happen again anytime soon is really, really unlikely. So it's just, it's important to put all in context when we say a max of five, but in twenty-something years, we've never done five. Right. And the only time we might have done it was the last two years, which we didn't do. So as we put that all together, like, when you see something and you say, the fee increase is this much, it could be that much. It could be less. And it's based on something that the city and the and the provider have no control over, right? So it could cost them more to provide the service. They still are only allowed to charge whatever CPI is. Right? So it could cost them more to provide the service. They still are only allowed to charge whatever CPI is. And if that's 2.75, that's all they get. And, you know, so it's just it's important to put those kinds of costs in perspective because we're looking at what the absolute max could be. But that doesn't mean each year, if it's 3%, and the next year, it could be another 5% based off of the number that they have with the 3% that they added to it. So it's it's just important to understand that what we're looking at is like the absolute worst case scenario that we could have. And that hasn't happened yet.
Quick question. Were we able to work out? I know we were trying, but I know the law was stopping us. A discount program for seniors using trash. Were we able to get that through or did we get stifled by the state?
Yeah, that that was not part of this proposal.
Okay.
Yep.
We tried. We got defeated. We were going to have a seniors program that was going to drop the discount on the trash, but state told us. Yeah, that too. They were we were trying to drop trash down, but they they said it wasn't doable.
All right, that is my list of questions, uh, from the public, which I thought was a pretty good, a pretty good sounding out of our issues here. Colleagues, do you have anything else you want to add?
I think I would only point out that in comparison to the stormwater fee that was going to raise 127% in over five years, that at worst case scenario, 5% a year, it would take 20 years to raise this 100%. So this is not apples to apples when we talk about other fees that have recently come before this body.
But didn't the stormwater thing go through?
No, it did not.
And actually, David, it strikes me for all the fact that we've kind of rambled around. This was really a good conversation because it gave us it gave us even opportunity to really explain some nitty gritty stuff that that might be difficult to get on the telephone or from reviewing a website. So I think we've we've really just had a good conversation about all the the difficult little difficulties that we all deal with, maybe on a weekly basis.
And I will say, and I'll echo what Steve said earlier, we we pride ourselves in providing a good customer service, whether it's through our vendors or through us and our actions. And so I think if you do have issues or things aren't working with the provider or those things, we're always available in here to handle those comments and questions ourselves.
Perfect.
And Steve, I just noticed there was one comment I didn't ask a question about, but I think I know the answer. Some cars don't move, so they can't be cleaned under. I know that Atlas proposed basically putting someone on the street with a blower to deal with chronic problems with that. And those chronic problems typically happen around multifamily or apartments where there's a lot of cars that don't move or or often the streets are parked full when they come to sweep. Is that an accurate representation?
Yes, it is. Yeah, and we we have multifamily properties where there just is not sufficient parking. And so there's typically cars on the street at all times, and it's very difficult to deal with. And so part of Atlas's proposal was that they would have somebody out there with a blower and they would coordinate with the street sweeper until they would they would blow that material out into the street and then have the sweeper come by and get it. And that would lead to a much better outcome.
Duplexes and porplexes have that problem, too.
Yeah, I don't think we can do that on every street, but we are going to make an effort to deal with the worst cases of that. Um, and if you do have such a worst case on your street, I would suggest contacting us and letting us know, and we'll see what we can do.
Good point.
All right. Anything else on this matter? If not, I think we are going to find out what the ballot count is.
And go ahead.
Um, I'd like to do a final call out for written protest forms if there's anyone out in the in the audience that would like to complete a form. Nope, I have them all.
All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, could you report the findings?
Yes, so the city received a total of 1,604 valid protests and a total of 39 invalid protests. Because there are fewer than 10,680 valid protests received, the City Council may choose to adopt the resolution approving the proposed rate adjustments.
Um, just a personal comment here. That is far and away the largest number of such protests I think I've ever heard uh, in our city on an item. So that that is is interesting to me. It's I think maybe that's a reflection of the pressure people are feeling with inflation. I don't know, but that that definitely makes me want to think about that.
Mayor, if I may too, I think part of it is we actually go above and beyond to try to make it easy for people to respond to the ballot, as Steve mentioned earlier, too. You know, other places don't give ballots to basically just fill it out and turn into. So we really try to go above and beyond to try to actually make it an easy process to do, which is maybe a little different than some other communities. And we've gotten better at it as we've gotten along too and getting the information out. So.
Comparison to the stormwater, which did fail because it received enough, correct? Is that? How did that one? Why did that one fail? Can somebody remind me?
Uh, that is a the calculation is different, and others may help too with the answer, but um, it's based on those who turned in their ballots percentage, not just total percentage, 50% majority within the of of the community or of residents. So that was a 50%.
Voted yes.
Who voted no, who turned it in.
So you could vote yes or no as a resident and then based on that, whoever had the most. In this one, it's a protest.
It's a protest vote of.
That's why we have a threshold to hit. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
That was one of those questions I didn't know the answer to. I wasn't just feeding him a question. I had no idea what the difference between those two.
The council is now in a position where we can proceed with deliberation and possible adoption of the resolution. So, Council, are there any comments about the resolution? If there are none, I'm seeking a motion.
Yeah, I mean, my only comment I would make is, and I I will make the motion to to approve it. This is the cost of doing this stuff. Most of this stuff is forced on us by the state. But if you look at if you look at the city's budget, even of what we collect, we don't make money on this contract. I know the vendor probably does in some way. But the fees are vastly lower than most of our surrounding jurisdictions. This is the second, the highest bill that we have as a city. Besides the police force, this is the next thing that we spend money on as far as priority wise. And in the end, while I did hear some some frustrations here tonight, I will tell you that the world over in 12 years on this council, I have not gotten very many complaints about our trash services. Um, and I hope we get even less with the new vendor. As they, you know, start to do this service in this region and hope to win other contracts, I think they're going to treat us very, very well and our residents very, very well because there's a contract coming up in Elk Grove and one in Citrus Heights and probably one at West SAC and some other places where they could compete if people are saying nice things about them. So hopefully, this is a better service. But there's a cost to this service. There just is. And every, you know, two years ago, the state said we needed to start picking up green waste every week, and we needed to start sifting out certain other things that were going into our our trash cans, and now they need to go into green waste, and that's a cost. It's not our choice. It's not what we wanted to do, but we had to do it. And I could give you David could probably give you a much longer list than I could because I don't remember this stuff probably as closely or see it as closely as he does. But unfortunately, everything is becoming more expensive. And unfortunately, sometimes we have to pass those costs off. And so without, I'll make the motion to approve the the election. That would.
Okay, a motion made. Any other comments? Or is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
And and just just if we could clarify that the the motion is to adopt the resolution consistent with the staff recommendation.
I would just basically second what Donald said. This is not completely a city program because there are so many state mandates and requirements. And because of that, our costs are not really under our control, nor are they really ironically under the vendor's control. It's influenced a whole lot more by by the state. And I would say the large increase you're seeing here is replacement of equipment and the additional service that the state rules have required. I think the state probably has good motivations for doing these things. I don't know that they always look at sort of the economic return on that investment. However, that's my my concern about it. Any other comments? If not, we have a motion and a second. Uh, could we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Terry.
Hi.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Pulapotti is absent. Mayor Sander.
Hi.
And the motion passes 4-0.
Okay, that was item 15.1, our public hearing item. I want to thank everybody who came to talk about that. We really appreciate having you in the room. We invite you to come back for other items that may interest you in our beautiful city. But thank you for your participation very, very much. All right, with that, we are going to go back on our agenda to item number 11, council reports. Um, I noticed the hour is getting later, so if we want to be abbreviated, I think that's fine. And Garrett, you're up first.
I'm going to step out for a sec. You guys can keep doing your council reports.
Mayor, perhaps you'd take a five-minute break so that we don't lose a quorum in the room.
In the room? Okay, we'll do that. Five-minute break.
P time.
All right, we are back in session and we are at council reports. So Garrett, you are up.
Okay, you don't have to report anything. I'm just going to make it real fast. Uh, we had a meeting with the Joint Planning Commission to talk about going over all the new stuff. Hopefully, we'll catch everything that we missed and redo all the county laws to make them our laws. Second, we're doing Sac Metro Fire. They are doing amazing work, amazing work. Um, we are got some concerns about losing one of our ambulances. And so we may have to address that sooner than later about how to maintain that ambulance in the city because it's keeping our numbers down. We're able to take care of the homeless, and we are doing a great job of that, and they have other things like that. And lastly, I met with JPA Connector, and he'll be giving a speech on that, and I'm not going to say anything else. Bye-bye.
All right, Linda.
Okay, so so we really haven't had a we really haven't had a meeting since the 5th of August. So we all did National Night Out. David and Siri being out of town, I attended an event for the 79th Korean Liberation Day event over at their cultural center. And it was really a super event. They highlighted a lot of a lot of volunteers and recognized a lot of contributions of their community to the city of Rancho Cordova. And since obviously David and Mica have additional information, I won't go any further with that. One of our leading citizens had a huge birthday party, which which involved almost all of girls softball. Like Garrett said, we did that metro fire thing, and they gave us the most marvelous statistics on their their accomplishments with their new mental health intervention program and how successful it is and how many people they are able to to keep from making a needless trip to the emergency room. Uh, that was it was really great, really great news. Last Friday, I attended two funerals. That was a lot for one day. And the first one was for a wonderful gentleman who just thought would go on forever and never leave us. When you talk about people who founded Rancho Cordova, you really have to talk about Chris Williamson and his family. And his his grandfather, his father, his grandfather, his great-grandfather were all part of the original farming community here in Rancho Cordova. There is now one park on the west side of Stuterus Drive dedicated to the either the father or the grandfather. And the park district is working on the park on the east side that will be dedicated to the other member of his family. But all of the walnut, all the Walnut Wood area, Williamson Elementary, a lot of stuff along Coloma Road, all of that was Williamson land. And and it's the reason that walnuts and things grew so well here in Rancho Cordova. The other one was for a 34-year member of the Elks, Ron Howell, who held many titles titles over his 34 years as an elk. And before that, he had been a a medic at Mather and had also then gone into ordinance disposal and made some strides there. And then, of course, the big the big event today, well, first of all, we did have a regular regional transit meeting. And the interesting thing is, we are now meeting in a different building. And so don't anybody go to 15th and the freeway for the for the meetings anymore. But they are entertaining bids and trying to find a buyer for all of that old property that they have had right there off the freeway. And that is going along quite well. However, today, Mica and I went to the launch, the ribbon cutting of the new low-floor cars. And this is so cool. Instead of having to climb those stairs, which I swear to you are getting taller every year, you simply walk straight onto the car. So for for people who have walkers or wheelchairs or any other mobility assistance needed for small people of all sizes and ages, it is so easy to get onto the train nowadays. And we're really thrilled. They gave us a goodie bag. And the most important thing in the goodie bag is regional transit socks. And I'm going to auction these off later to the highest bidder and give it and donate it to the Cordova Food Lock. If anybody wants regional transit socks, see me. So and and so I would just ask if we could please close tonight's meeting in memory of Chris Williamson and Ron Howell.
Ron Howell?
Howell, H-O-W-E-L-L.
Oh, my goodness, Ron Howell.
You know Ron. I know you know Ron. Yep.
Okay, I did not know about that.
Yeah.
All right, Donald, you're up.
I'll be brief. I'm wearing my bike ranch Cordova socks. That's about it. Now, in the in the interest of saving time, and I think we talked about really, I think the only meeting that I was at air did not meet last month. Nor did STA, so I'll leave it at that.
All right, I also have a brief report. I'm going to ask Mica to help me with a little bit of it. I attended National Night Out. What a great evening that was. There we I don't know, we're not we're only able to go to a limited number, so we're able to divide it up. I think we're pretty efficient at that. A record attendance at the three that I was at. So I'm I was very, very impressed. That's that's some good work by our staff and and of course by our neighbors who are out there doing the National Night Out program. I was at the Galsi BIP opening, Korean barbecue restaurant, intersection of Folsom Boulevard and Zinfandel. And you want to go there and test out their Korean barbecue. I know we've got four or five Korean restaurants in town. This one's the newest, but you should definitely go check them out. They've got robots that deliver food. And I think Garrett and I may have mentioned it before, but definitely check them out. Last week, RCA got the product of an MOU discussion that's been going on at the school district. Really great progress going on there. This is a wonderful first step in partnering with our school district to make school facilities more available for youth sports. So it's a really big win. I want to thank city staff, Mica, who were involved in that. We have more work to do. We have a lot more development to do with youth sports, but this is a this is a big, big deal.
So is the MOU signed?
It has to be adopted by the school board, but I don't see any barrier to do it.
Well, that's great.
That's happening Thursday. It's on the list for Thursday.
Yeah. It's, you know, there's if I were to write it, it would be a little bit different from what it is, but it is so much better than where we were before. I can't can't even tell you. Uh, let's see, the Lancers at Cordova High School football team, 2-0, starting the season. But not only that, attendance is off the chart at the football games there because RCA has dedicated some resources, community council's dedicated some resources to making those games really fun. So the players are running out of a tunnel. There's smoke. There's rumors of fireworks even at the football games. There's huge attendance. The the number of food, the amount of food sold on each one of the two games, home games they've had has exceeded all of last year's combined.
If you want, if you don't get there early, the tacos sell out by the end of the JV game.
Are full. Are full. So it is fun. They're giving away t-shirts, they're giving away towels, all kinds of crazy stuff is happening. It's like going to minor league baseball, you know, the fun stuff that happens there. So don't miss that and go Lancers. Oh, and if you haven't voted, go to KCRA, vote to make them the game of the week. I think we're up by a couple thousand votes, but hey, it wouldn't hurt. Uh, a couple more votes to put them over the top. Finally, huge dedication of my time last couple of weeks, uh, this last month has been travel. Specifically, travel on behalf of the city to Korea. We did a trip with GSAC, the Greater Economic, uh, Greater Sacramento Economic Development Corporation. It was sponsored by UC Davis and Chancellor May at UC Davis. So there was great participation from Rancho Cordova. Vice Mayor Pulapati and I and Mica were all on the trip. Uh, the Mayor Folsom was on the trip, a bunch of, uh, other individuals from UC Davis, as they were the main sponsors, were on the trip. We, um, we had very intense schedules, like eight AM to eight PM kind of, kind of schedules with meetings, lunches, um, briefings, presentations, and all of it in, uh, in, you know, in the Korean, Korean business climate, which was very unique and very different from ours. So it was quite, quite interesting and enormously positive. I don't know, Mica, how much you want to, uh, want to go into details here, but we met with Samsung, we met with SK Hynix, we were hosted by the city of Yongin. And, uh, they have an interest actually in creating a sister city relationship with, with Rancho Cordova. There was a lot of focus on semiconductors now that Solidae is here and Solidae, of course, their parent company is SK Hynix in Korea. SK Hynix is also the new owner of Aerojet Fine Chemicals, um, or Ampac, I guess they were known as for a while. So SK Hynix has a presence here in Rancho Cordova. We've had an awesome partnership with them. We met with literally their top leadership in Korea. And our consultants who were on the trip said that sort of access is really unusual. So they hadn't, they hadn't seen it, that sort of access before. So we've got real opportunity here if we continue on our course of being business-friendly and supportive and looking for, you know, economic partners to grow, uh, grow our economy in Rancho Cordova. I'm really excited, really excited by it, really honored to have represented Rancho Cordova there. And I think I'll just end my, end my, uh, report with that. Although, Mica, I think we distributed some, uh, little anime stuffed animals. Is that correct?
Correct, and so.
I'm gonna let you explain that.
Yeah.
Anything else you want to add?
Sure, so, thank, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'll just, uh, follow that with, you know, a, a trip like that and a, and a visit like that is not something we take lightly and, and kind of, um, it really has to be of good value. And this was really a great value for what our opportunity is with the businesses that are in Korea and some of the ones that have the local connection here with SK Hynix and Solidae and, and the whole SK Group. And so, um, Samsung is the largest, you know, uh, company in, in, uh, in Korea, but SK Group is the second largest. So, um, this is not, um, small businesses. These are big businesses with lots of investment opportunity. And so, uh, I think for the trip, it focused and I actually, as we were watching the economic development strategy discussion earlier tonight at the four o'clock session, you know, the two, uh, two of the main areas that it talked about was technology and life sciences. And this trip really was focused on both technology and life sciences and developing relationships with Korean companies that are focused on those areas. So really, um, even though the strategy is not done, we're already implementing strategic opportunities as they come up and, and partnering with the different, um, communities or different businesses that are in, uh, that are in Korea that we'd like to, uh, have them grow and expand what they're doing here. And so I think there is real opportunity and, and, um, you know, I come from an economic development background, so this is not something I'm not accustomed to, uh, but it is something that is unique. And as far as it, you know, as kind of an access and as, as the mayor said, is kind of a high-level access, is not something I've seen, you know, in my career. And so, uh, I think it's something that we'll look at and, and take full advantage of in the relationships that we're building there. And, uh, we hope to see them soon, uh, in the community. A little side trip or part of the trip that ended up happening was a discussion of sister cities. And so, um, council asked, uh, early on this year to kind of start taking a look at different sister city opportunities and focused on Korea because of this, these relationships. And we had the opportunity to, uh, visit Yongin City. And so Yongin Cities is a little over a million people. They're focused on semiconductors and technology as a city. Um, and so we had a great meeting with the administrators of that city and, and starting the, uh, the dating process as, uh, as we'll call it with the sister cities of, of Yongin City. Uh, but one of the unique things they had as a city is they have mascots and lots of cities have mascots in Korea. And so, uh, we have Jao Yong, Jao, or Jao Yong, uh, which is the mascot for the city of Yongin City that we've, uh, brought, uh, to the council here to, to recognize and remember the trip to, uh, to Korea. And so, uh, it is a dragon and most of the mascots are very cute, uh, in Korea. And so, uh, we really do appreciate it. And I think this is just the beginning of, of future relationships that we'll have. And I think, um, as David, as we were there, we, we, we did acquire some, or as, as Mayor Sander acquired some flags with Korea and the United States on it matching. So we're prepared for those future visits, uh, and conversations with Korea as we move forward. But really was a great trip and an opportunity where we'll continue to explore the different options that we'll have moving forward.
All right, very good. Anything else, Mica? Managers' report?
No, I think that's, uh, it for me. I did go on a Metro Fire ride-along a couple of weeks ago. And so I got a, a really close access to that squad that Councilmember Gatewood was talking about. But, um, I think it was good to get out and see what they were doing in our community, um, as a different service provider.
Yeah, I went on a PD ride-along. If you haven't done one of those recently, uh, I encourage it. Uh, we have.
I think, uh, city attorney's got a comment.
Oh, all right, go ahead.
Just one, one quick comment. Uh, the, we're at the end of the legislative session and, uh, a whole host of important bills are on the governor's desk. Um, I always give you an update on new legislation affecting the city at or about or just after the beginning of the year. Uh, one bill that we will be looking at very, very closely, uh, is a, a new bill that, uh, would regulate pretty comprehensively going forward, not backward, uh, the logistics industry in turn, including a variety of standards and that sort of thing. So we've been looking at that very, very closely. Yet it was the result of very last-minute, um, work and legislative activity. Um, but that will be one of the important things we'll be comprehensively updating the council on. He has twenty-eight more days to decide to sign or not.
Yeah, that is a very interesting piece of legislation. I'm an honorary member, ex-official member of the, of the board for, um, California League of Cities or Cal Cities. And they actually, um, by committee, came out in opposition to that piece of legislation, which in my view, I probably would be in support of it. So, um, the, there was opposition, though I just wanted to, to share this with the council because it is a state mandate on local development decisions is, is what their concern was. But it is on the governor's desk and it was passed overwhelmingly in the legislature, so we'll see what happens. All right, if there's nothing else, I'm going to go on to, uh, consent calendar items. Consent calendars, consists of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. So are there any items the council wishes to pull between thirteen point one and thirteen point ten?
Do we have any public comment?
We do not have any public comment for items on the consent calendar.
Then I will move approval of items thirteen point one through thirteen point ten.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yep.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pulapati is absent. Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Um, we're gonna move on to item fourteen, consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items consists of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. So I'm going to open the public hearing. Uh, Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Are there any items the council wishes to pull? If not, I'm open for motion.
Hope, hearing, hearing none, hoping none. I will pull, uh, move item fourteen point one.
All right, is there a second?
Second, but I don't want to pull it.
Roll call, please.
Nobody's pulling, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Nope.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Yeah, aye.
Vice Mayor Pulapati is absent. Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Motion passes.
To public hearing unanimous, that brings us to public hearing items, which we have already covered, item fifteen point one. And then regular calendar items, which is sixteen point one. And I think Garrett has a presentation for us.
We are the champions, my friend. Twenty-six million dollars, woo! Walk into the room. We will keep fighting to the end. Talk about the next, next twenty million. We are the champions. We, oh, go ahead, Derek.
All right, Madam Clerk, if you want to announce the subject, please.
Yes. Capital Southeast Connector Joint Power Authority Project Update Presentation by Executive Director Eric Menema.
Hi there. Good evening. I, I do have a presentation. If it didn't pull it up. Great to see all, great to see all of you. I did not bring my connector socks, so, uh, I'm disappointed. I can't share those with you.
Actually, it means you have to sing your presentation.
Oh, fire! Go ahead.
Uh, that was a wonderful introduction. Thank you, Garrett. I'll just wait a few seconds for the presentation to pull up. But, um, again, my name is Derek Menema and I am the Executive Director of the Capital Southeast Connector Joint Powers Authority. The Joint Powers Authority is an entity that was formed in two thousand and six. And the city of Rancho Cordova, city of Elk Grove, city of Folsom, Sacramento County and Eldorado County, all members of it. Uh, I am a civil engineer by training and I've been with the Joint Powers Authority since, uh, two thousand and fourteen. Became Executive Director in two thousand and seventeen. Our office is located very nearby. Uh, we're actually just right in Mather, right? So about one minute away. And we have our meetings here quarterly, right here in these little city council chambers. So usually I'm sitting right there where, uh, Mr. Lindgren is. So it's nice to be here at the podium and presenting to you today. Just gonna give a, a, a project update and I'll start with a, just a big picture overview of our project. So the Capital Southeast Connector was put on the ballot, uh, in two thousand and four, uh, countywide as Measure A. And voters in Sacramento County were asked if we wanted to build a new expressway in the South County. And so the project is thirty-four miles. It connects Interstate five to Highway ninety-nine to State Route sixteen and then connects up to Highway fifty in Eldorado County. Thirty-four miles is sixty-eight miles of frontage, so we have thousands of property owners that we deal with along our alignment. Approximately seven miles are within the city of Rancho Cordova from Highway sixteen up to White Rock Road. Project, um, was, uh, like I said, uh, put on the ballot in two thousand and four with Measure A. And then subsequently after that, in two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve, we circulated a environmental impact report and have since gone on to implement the project. Several projects have been constructed to date. Uh, this is just a snapshot of the more, more recent ones. In the last couple of years since two thousand and twenty, we have reconstructed White Rock Road south of Highway fifty in, in the city of Folsom for about three and a half miles. That's in the top photo on your screen. It's a four-lane divided expressway with an adjacent Class One bike trail along its entire route. And that bike, bike trail is planned to extend the entire project length. So when complete, we will have a South County Class One bike trail that will go for over thirty miles. It'll be, it'll be wonderful. Um, also, out in the unincorporated county area, we just, uh, constructed a new roundabout as an entrance into, uh, the Prairie City State Vehicular Recreation Area. And then down on the left-hand side of your screen is a photo of what's known as Camera Road down in the city of Elk Grove. And this was a project that, uh, was a rural road that we were able to reconstruct. And one of the ancillary, uh, elements of, of COVID and, and that type of timeframe was that we were able to actually close this road for an entire nine months and accelerated our construction. So that was a really cool feature that we were able to do during that time period. In Rancho Cordova, there are a few improvements that are ongoing along Grant Line Road. This is, uh, a picture of Chrysanthemum Boulevard and Grant Line. This is intersection. It's still under construction, I believe, and we're putting in tra, we, not we, uh, the city of Rancho Cordova is putting in a traffic signal at this intersection. And that's one of the developer-funded improvements. This is not a connector-funded improvement, but it's, uh, indication of some of the interim work that is occurring, uh, along our alignment. In recent years, we've had, uh, some regional events to celebrate our coalition and the success of the project that we're having. On the left is a bus tour that we did, uh, past November, where we brought commissioners from the California Transportation Commission and their staff out on a bus tour with some federal representatives to kind of highlight the project. And it was well-timed because just a few months later, uh, to, to, our application for funding was successful. So as Mr. Gatewood was celebrating as I walked up to the podium, uh, just a few weeks ago, we had a nice, I, I would call it a check signing ceremony out on Grant Line Road for twenty-five million dollars. And that is a maximum award to the federal government, uh, towards, towards our project. And that money will go to construction, reconstruction of Grant Line Road right in the city of Rancho Cordova.
They can hear me through that. What does that make our total for this year? Eric, we practiced this. What does that make our total for this year?
I'd say probably, around fifty million dollars.
Thank you.
Around fifty million.
The most it's ever gotten?
Working, we're working. We still have more to go.
Thank you, go.
Still have more to go.
Rancho.
So part of our effort is to build a coalition of supporters. And one of the ways that we look at that is by the landowners, right? Because they're the ones that are going to be the most immediately and directly impacted. And I'm pleased to share just a sample of the project support that we have out in this area. Aerojet Rocketdyne is, you know, a pretty well-known commodity. Stone Ridge Quarry, there's a lot of mining ac, uh, activities out along Grant Line Road. Taika Materials is another one. Van Vleek Ranch, um, well-known and longstanding family in the South County and of course, the city of Rancho Cordova. Thank you. Few more, uh, support letters, uh, that I wanted to highlight for you today is the bipartisan nature of support of our project. Uh, we have, uh, both Congressman Ami Barra and Congressman Kevin Kiley, who have supported our project. They were both at the check signing ceremony that we had. Construction Labor is a big supporter of ours and was a big supporter of that application, as well as Senator Alex Pidia, which, uh, was tremendous help in securing the grant. So overall, in the last year or so, uh, we've got forty-three point seven million in federal, state and local funding that have been brought into the project. Four million dollars through the Consolidation Appropriations Act of two thousand and twenty-three. That went to a bike trail. We have three million dollars in Senate Bill One funding, and that's what's funding the work right now in Rancho Cordova. It's, um, the Road Repair and Accountability Act. So that three million dollars is going to the design, uh, the engineering design and the right-of-way of Grant Line Road. Through Sacramento Transportation Authority, we have a six-point-seven million dollar allocation for capital improvements and then a five million dollar allocation for mitigation. And as the mitigation goes, uh, that is a total to date of fifteen million dollars in, uh, permanent open space preservation that we're doing along our alignment. And then most recently, the twenty-five million that you saw. Now, upcoming, and this is something that our board has just, uh, uh, acted on last week, is that we are submitting a twenty million dollar state grant application. This application is going in in collaboration with the county of Sacramento, the city of Rancho Cordova, and we have the support of SECOG on this application. So over the next month or so, we're going to be moving through SECOG, through the Transportation Committee and the full board. And if we come out of that as the number one priority, which I, I feel confident that we will, we will submit our application to the state for a matching twenty million dollars to that federal grant. So in addition to that state grant application, we have another thirty million that is pending through congressional appropriations. And so while those last two are pending, uh, we, we still feel very confident about the state grant application because of the work we've done to build a coalition with both SECOG, STA, and, um, the county and the city. And what will that do if we're successful is that we will reconstruct Grant Line Road between White Rock and Chrysanthemum Boulevard. Right? So we're anticipating that it will occur sometime in late two thousand and twenty-six if we're successful. That is a city of Elk Grove application for a hundred, a hundred-plus million dollars for their Camera Road project. That is a city of Elk Grove application for a hundred-plus million dollars for their Camera Road project. We're waiting to hear on that one. So right now, the way our work plan and our budget is developed is really about three distinct projects, and we have three cities that we're servicing, right? So down in Elk Grove, we have the Camera Road Extension. Representative Matsui has submitted our project for congressional allocation for that project. Representative Bera, right here in Rancho Cordova, for the Grantline Road Safety and Freight Mobility Project. And then Congressman Kiley, up in the Folsom area, for Phase Two of the White Rock Road Expressway. So these requests have been submitted for federal appropriations. But it is, I think, notable that all three of our representatives along our alignment have supported this project and put in significant requests for federal funding. So I feel like there's a lot of good momentum there, particularly with our recent federal grant application and as well as our state funding applications. So I just want to touch on the work happening right here in the city of Rancho Cordova. And so the work that I was mentioning is from White Rock Road down to Chrisanthi Boulevard. So this is approximately three miles. And as many of you know, the state of Grantline Road out there today is dilapidated. It is a road that's probably fifty to sixty years old. A lot of potholes, no shoulders. Mayor Sander did a driving tour and narrated it. It's in bad shape. And unfortunately, there have been some fatalities in this stretch, and so the safety need is pretty great. So to address the safety need and the longstanding, you know, maintenance and rehabilitation need that's out there, we were fortunate to secure the three million dollars from the state that I had mentioned. The city of Rancho Cordova has assigned an MOU, the JPA, for one point six million dollars. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. That money is going to go into the engineering design, the right-of-way, the utility relocations. We have now secured twenty-five million from the federal government. We're seeking another twenty. So that total of forty-five million dollars, if we're successful, will go into this complete reconstruction for about thirty miles or so. So right now, we have a contract in place. It's with Docking Engineering. They're a firm up in Folsom. They're doing the engineering design. That's underway. We anticipate in early two thousand and twenty-five doing right-of-way acquisition. And this is going to be buying the land rights on both sides of the road. And last week, our board, the JPA Board, approved the notice of decisions to appraise. So that process has kicked off, and we will be, over the next several months, meeting and making offers and establishing fair market value to properties along this stretch. As I mentioned, late two thousand and twenty-six, early two thousand and twenty-seven, that's our goal for construction, right? That's our goal. Some, it's a little bit of uncertainty there with our funding, but again, that uncertainty is mitigated by the excellent coalition and partnership that we have with our agencies. So on this stretch of road, the stakeholders, as I mentioned, Tykert, Sunridge, North Douglas, these are the stakeholders in this area. And we have a pretty active public outreach component. We have great relationships with the city staff here at Public Works. And late this year, or certainly next year for sure, we will be in discussions about right-of-way acquisition in this stretch. So I believe that wraps up my presentation, and I am here for Q and A.
So David, I do have one question.
Go right ahead.
And it's not really a question, it's a comment. David and I both sit on the SPTC JPA. And so there's a lot of people really interested in how the excursion rail crosses White Rock Road. And for obvious reasons, overpasses and underpasses are not real practical when you're a volunteer organization. So just to note that there's a lot of people watching it.
Thank you for the comment, and I'm well aware of this issue. Earlier this year, the city of Folsom had a public hearing on this exact issue. I was attending that. I'm very well aware of the sentiment of the historic rail. And our agency, working closely with the city of Folsom, is coming up with several different alternatives to make that a crossing that will work for everyone.
I'm just going to say, great job this year. Brought in more money than has ever been in the history of the JPA. And I know we've been battling a lot with other entities that don't want us to build the four lanes out, but luckily, we were able to get two, and we're going to find a way. I asked Albert to figure out exactly how much it would cost to take the two to four, just because I want to know that amount, because we're going to have to target ourselves to, as a community, bootstrap ourselves to get that piece done, because that pace is just super unsafe. I'm tired of having people roll off the side. And I know as part civil, that no matter what you can do, you can't make two lanes safer than four. So I'm hoping that I can get a quote, at least a number, when you're doing it, Albert, of how much it's going to cost to make it just loop right there from two to make it four all the way until we go into the south side of Anatolia. So, thank you. Good job. You deserve a raise. Not this year, but in four years.
Mr. Gatewood is the JPA Board Chair. Just point that out.
He also isn't running for reelection, so he won't be around in four years to be on that board. Unless you move. I mean, maybe that's happened. I don't know.
It's been a wonderful working relationship, Mr. Gatewood.
See? Micah, that's how it should be.
You're saying it's not, huh? Thank you for your time.
Okay.
I think Micah would be nervous about only getting a raise in four years.
We can't, we have to agendaize that, so let's not talk about that.
Let's go and say, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much, Derek. That was great. It's wonderful to see progress on this mega project. And this really is a mega project for our reach, John. It's a big deal. Okay, we are going on to, oh, and I assume, Derek, you know, you've got full support of the city and anything you need with regard to the additional federal and state applications. I assume that's a given.
Not to belabor the point, but did we ask if there's any public comment?
There is no public comment for item sixteen point one. Thank you.
We are going to go on to item sixteen point two, since there's no public comments. And let's see. Do you want to read that title, please?
Sure. Fiscal Year 2023 through 2024 Preliminary Year-end Financial Report.
All right. Good evening, Council. Tonight, I am here to present the Fiscal Year 2023-24 Preliminary Year-end Financial Report. And as has been the case in most of our recent years, our general fund revenues came in pretty close to budget, but did exceed budget. And we're going to get into the specifics in the next few slides. But overall, the majority of our revenues in the general fund kind of behaved as anticipated. Kind of a key contributing factor that we saw and have continued to see impact our budget has been just the phenomenally high amount of new growth and development in the community. And so that continues to have a significant impact, both on the revenue side of the equation, as well as our expenditures. And then on the expense side, our general fund expenditures did come in well below budget, and that was kind of driven by kind of two key areas. One is attributable to kind of that growth and development again, and also our police contracts. So I'm going to get into the specifics on those as we work through the presentation. So starting with general fund revenues, this just shows a kind of five years of actuals, as well as the 2023-24 budget. So on the far right-hand column, you'll see our actuals from the prior fiscal year. And overall, general fund revenues continued their upward trend, reaching yet again a new high of eighty point four million. And again, this is not including Measure H and Measure R, Community Enhancement Fund dollars. This is just purely general fund revenues. So overall, for the last five years, we've seen general fund revenues increase by thirty-one percent, and the year-over-year increase just this past year was about six percent. So kind of staying on pace with that, what we've seen in the recent five years. And we've seen that our revenues came in about three million dollars above budget. So definitely saw that most part revenues behaved as expected. Those three green circles kind of highlight the three areas of our general fund revenues that kind of came in more than expected. Sales tax, building permits, and interest income. So I'm going to talk a little bit further about some of those on the next slide. So starting with our taxes, you can see, you know, overall, over the last five years, we've seen continued growth in our tax base. And you might recall, I came and gave the mid-year report somewhere around February or March. And at that time, our sales tax consultant was warning, sales tax revenues were not going to meet budget. We were trending very low for the first three quarter, or kind of the first three quarters of the fiscal year. However, as it seems to be the case in Rancho Cordova, something unexpected came in before the end of the fiscal year. And so in about late May, we learned of a business that had moved into Rancho Cordova in prior years, but had been remitting to the wrong jurisdiction. So we were, after some cleanup, we received a one-time payment of two point one million that we earned. That's how we roll in Rancho. So... I cannot, no. I cannot. But anyways, that was a nice, unexpected addition to sales tax revenue. And brought us in where we were expecting to actually see our first drop in sales tax in the last, you know, five, six years. We continued to see upward momentum in that regard. So overall, once again, something unexpected came through, and sales tax continued to perform. The other thing, other revenue source that performed phenomenally well this past year was building permits. You can kind of see in the last five years, you know, we saw in the early nineteen-twenty and twenty-twenty-one during the COVID years, we saw residential construction really leading, kind of carrying the permit revenues. And then we kind of started to see that flip with commercial taking on a bit more in the following two years. And then now we're kind of seeing that flip again, pretty even, but overall residential bringing in about three million dollars of permit revenue, with over a thousand new residential permits issued last year, and two point three million on the commercial side for a total, again, a new high of five point three million in building permits. Switching gears to the expense side, this just kind of shows how our actual expenditures performed in accordance to budget. And you'll see, we came in just about five million dollars, a little bit less than five million dollars, under budget. And that was led by two key areas of savings. The first being personnel costs, so we saw about two million dollars of savings on that side. And that was largely attributable to the fact that with the kind of robust level of building activity, a lot of salaries get charged outside of the general fund. They'll get charged directly to projects. And so that resulted in overall the amount of expenditures in the general fund being less than expected or less than budgeted. And then the other key one, which was a larger amount, is the city's contract with the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department for the police contract. And we saw this come in about three million dollars below budget. And this was driven largely by savings from the retirement costs. The city pays a portion of the county's pension obligation bonds through the contract, and the county did do a refinancing of those bonds at a lower interest rate. So that resulted in some savings. Plus, we're starting to see some of the lower tiers of retirement start to become predominant with the staffing. And so that has also resulted in overall just lower retirement costs. So overall, that was about three million dollars below budget. So the year-end snapshot, we saw that with the combination of revenues coming in above budget, expenditures coming in well below budget, we ended up with about seven point eight million dollars of revenues over expenditures. And so in accordance with how the general fund reserve policy that's in place, what would happen, unless directed otherwise, is that we would continue to maintain that twenty percent economic uncertainty reserve in the general fund. And so we do, because as expenditures rise, we need to make some adjustments to make sure that maintains that twenty percent. So that two point five million would essentially just stay in the general fund to keep, to maintain that twenty percent reserve set aside. And then beyond that, the remaining amount of surplus funds would be split fifty percent to the infrastructure replacement fund and the other fifty percent to the city's capital facilities fund. And then finally, Community Enhancement Investment Funds. So as I mentioned a few slides ago, you know, overall sales tax revenues, we did start to see kind of a pullback on those this year. We went pretty aggressive with the twelve point five million dollar budget. The actual sales tax revenues for both H and R respectively came in at twelve point one million. Measure H had a pass-through grant for soilborne farms that put it up at twelve point five in total revenues. But overall, sales tax revenues did miss the budget. So that will result in some adjustment to the legacy allocation as of the year end for that.
I'd like to remind you, we also got a five-to-one match on that grant.
They did an amazing job on the way out the door.
Okay. So that's the end of the presentation. Overall, very positive news. And there are two action items before you this evening. The first resolution would just be approving a fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four year-end budget amendment. And those budget amendments largely are just adjustments that resulted in more revenues than expected due to development activity and then increased expenditures as well, and the same funds. And the second item is a resolution approving the fiscal year 2024-25 full-time and part-time employee salary schedule. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes. We have one public comment from Jim Garcia that was submitted via email. It's been distributed to the city council. It has been placed on the city's website, and it is in the binder in the back of the council chambers. That is all the public comment we have for this item.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Roll call.
Any other comments? This is a receive and adopt the resolution, so I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second. Is that for both resolutions? Can we do them both at the same time?
He said yes.
Okay.
Yes, I said yes.
What's the second resolution? I'm missing that.
The... Receive a report, adopt a resolution approving the financial twenty-two-three.
I'll move the staff recommendation for this item.
And you got a first and a second?
All right, so we have a first and a second for adopting item sixteen point two, the staff recommendation. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood?
What? I'm sorry. Yes.
Vice Mayor Pulapati is absent. Mayor Sander?
Aye.
And just for the record again, the two resolutions are the budget amendment and the salary schedule.
Motion passes.
All right, very good. That leaves us at item number seventeen. Council requests for future agenda items.
I don't have a future agenda item, but I would announce that Leroy Trippette bid all ten dollars for the socks. And it seems to me that somebody wants them more than just ten dollars worth.
Did he text you?
Yeah.
I'll buy them for a hundred.
Seriously?
Hundred bucks. I'll give it to the, I'll give it to our team.
Councilmember, you didn't indicate that there was a reserve when you opened the auction.
All right, with that, we're going to adjourn.
Yeah.
And we're going to adjourn in memory of Chris Williamson, whose family's had a huge impact on Rancho Cordova, and for Ron Howell, who was a noted community leader here in Rancho Cordova.
Great.
The passing of both of them is a loss to us, but we honor their memory.
I trust you. Ten, hundred dollars.
And with that, we are adjourned.